I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, November 21st, 2017, regular meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask that everyone join us in a moment of silent prayer and reflection, particularly as we move into a holiday season, thinking about our law enforcement and first responders responding to incidents and keep them all in protection, and also the citizens of this county during this busy and joyous time. So, please join us. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to declare by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice
Mr. Smith, would you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've got two adjustments to the agenda. Both of these are under administrative matters. Under 8.4, this is a discussion of the personnel policy concerning accruals of vacation time. 8.5 is a discussion of the I-77 Local Policy Advisory Group.
Any additional adjustments? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted by Mr. Smith? Motion to approve agenda by Commissioner Hough. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. We don't have any specific special recognitions or awards this evening, but we do have an appointment for the Board, a request from Allison Sigman, who is President of Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills Chapter Incorporated, to introduce their public, or their program, rather, for the benefit of the citizens of Iredell County, and a request to adopt their proclamation. So, Allison, if you could just on podium and just please announce for the record your name and address.
Okay. My name is Allison Sigman, and I live in, out on Yolela Drive in Catawba. I am president over Pink Heels, the North Carolina Foothills Chapter, and this is Darlene Huffman. She's our CEO for title purposes. We are a group of firefighters, EMS, police officers, business owners, but primarily emergency service personnel or close family members of or retired emergency personnel. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, and we raise awareness and funds for families and other nonprofit entities that assist women and their families in their time of need. We bring the community together out of love, not on behalf of a cause, or a ribbon, or a certain disease. We are the people's charity. It is our focus to bring the community together to help every person in this community in their time of need. It doesn't matter if it's breast cancer, it doesn't matter if it's multiple cirrhosis. We want to be there for the members of this community. Too many organizations raise money and they send it everywhere across the United States. We take the money that is raised in this community, and we give it right back to the people in this community. The way that we use our funds, we'll raise the funds through merchandise sales and donations. We also do fundraisers throughout the year. The money that we raise, we break it into $200 increments. We take that $200, and if we have a request, we do make sure that it is a valid request, and we take that, excuse me, that $200, and we pay the doctor directly, or the pharmacy directly, or if they need a fuel card, we will get them a fuel card. If they need groceries, we'll get them a grocery card, but we pay the bill directly that they need. We do this, once again, like I said, for all illnesses and all diseases. The focus is, so many times, people who truly need help from their community are not the ones that reach out for it. So, we get these little birds in our ear that come and tell us that this person is battling this illness or disease, and their family's struggling emotionally. So, we try to help them out financially. And the really, really cool part about our program is we do home visits. We have, right now, we have one pink truck. It's a 1986 Pierce Dash that is painted pink. And then we have a second one that was donated from a fire department in Kansas, and it is a 1989 Pierce Dash. We're in the process of having Mako donate their time and paint that for us as well. But we get, whatever jurisdiction this person who is down and out lives in, we get the local EMS, police, fire, and business owners in that area, and we meet at the local, whatever the local emergency service building is closest to their home. We line up, and about a fourth of a mile, we turn on lights and sirens, and we pull up to this house, and we all get out, and we're all in uniform, and we're in pink turnout gear, and we go, and each person hugs this person that's battling the illness or disease, and then goes to their family member and hugs them. And our whole purpose is just to let them know that we love them, we care about them, and we support them. I've been with fire service for 12, Darlene's been with it for about 35 years now total. When we go on calls as emergency responders, we have a job to do. We go in, we do our job, and we go home. Do we cry after? Absolutely. Are there many times, as a female, I'm here to tell you, I have wanted to hold these people, hold these babies, I've wanted to cry, I've wanted to do everything with them, but we have a job to do, we do it, and we go home. This is our chance to go out and share those tears, share that love with them, and let them know we are there above and beyond the drop of that tone. Also by doing this, when we do our home visits, everybody knows, when you hear emergency service vehicles, what does everybody in the neighborhood do? They all stick their head out the window, the front door, they want to know what's going on. So, when we pull up, here come all the neighbors. And once again, like I said, those that truly need help are not always the ones that ask for it, and they keep things kind of quiet. So, what this does is, well, here's Billy Bob down the road, and here's Sally Jane two doors down, and they go, "We had no idea they were sick. Can we come mow their grass? Can we bring them a plate of food? How can we help you? Can we babysit your kids one night a week, you know, when you're going through chemo?" Whatever they need for their illness. And that's our whole, we are the people's charity, so it's our whole focus just to bring the sense of community back. You start letting the community know there's someone in your own community that needs help, they're going to. As long as there's these organizations where it's like, "Oh, bring in all this, and bring in all the money, and we're going to send it here, and we're going to send it there," and each has their reason, but I'm here to tell you that Pink Heels, we are a fishbowl. I tell everybody, you can go to our Facebook, you can go to our website, you can call myself or Darlene, we're never afraid to show you where the monies went. You see every home visit that we do, you see all the, I blow up my Facebook with our pictures, so you see it. And the cool, really cool part about it, no matter who you are in the county, you can join us, you can be part of our convoy. Last year, we helped 50 homeless, 53 homeless and three families at Christmas. We took them food, the homeless, we took necessity items, survival items, toboggan socks, blankets, some granola bars, et cetera. Then the families, we took food, shampoos, conditioners, and the children, of course, toys, and of course, Santa rides in on the pink fire truck with all these emergency service vehicles around. And to see these kids' face when there is this pink fire truck, and then the families get to come be a part of this and sign it, it really brings the community together. This year, we're looking at doing six families. We are in Burke, Alexander, Caldwell, Catawba. Last night, we got proclaimed and adopted into Lincoln County, and so we're hoping tonight, asking you to adopt us into Iredell County so that we can bring this to your citizens. So, you would be county number six. So, we're looking to do six families this year, so we'll do one family in each county to spread the welfare, and we're looking for families who just truly need a helping hand at Christmas, no matter what. A lot of times, if they're paying medical bills, it's the people who are working full-time jobs, and they're sick, and they have a lot of medical bills, that they can't afford Christmas because they may not qualify for any assistance, because they're both technically working, but they're paying benefits, and they're paying their co-pays, and, you know, so we really try to reach out to those that don't get the assistance at the state level. But like I said, tonight, we're here to ask that Iredell County adopt us and allow us to come in with the support of several of the fire departments here already. I'm with Mooresville Fire, but Lake Norman Fire, Mooresville Fire, Shepherds and Troutman, they have already assisted us in a couple home visits in the, in the county, just trying to kind of bring it in and make people aware of what we do. And so, I do know that we have a lot of the fire chiefs, from what I've worked, I've worked with many of them for many years, and I know that they support us as far as this goes. So, now, we're reaching out and trying to get the other emergency services, and then, of course, your blessing for this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Sigman. Are there some comments from members of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I, as you will know, we get a lot of requests to meet with folks and look at their programs and listen to this, but I really, really enjoyed the opportunity to sit down with Ms. Sigman and listen to what their organization does for the people of, in the county, and I was very impressed. I mean, it was, they, we need this, because at the end of the day, it's about relationships. It really, really is. And I just, I can't, I'm wholeheartedly in support of this. I just want you to know that she's got me sold on this. And I've researched it too, you know, and they're on the level. I believe this is a good thing, I really do.
I just, I just would like to say, you know, looking at your proposal, and I would like to encourage you to, the sheriff and his department are very active in social media, and please share your success stories. We have a PR director, Ben Stocklether, behind you guys. Get with him, and make sure when you guys help people in what you're doing, and go into events, let us have the opportunity to post it on our websites, and sometimes, if we know about it beforehand, maybe some of us can come, and I know the sheriff's very active in the community too. I know you reached out to him.
Absolutely.
He's bragged about your organization as well, and looking forward to assisting you. But I just want to say, your direct allocations, your timing and services for your services and community focus, I want to applaud you guys and thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
And I'd just like to thank you all, so it looks like you're giving of your heart and of your time, and you're not asking for nothing in return, and that's rare in this day and time. And I'd also like to mention that this is actually Tommy's coat, it's not mine. He bought it, so I just want to make sure everybody realizes that.
I look very handsome, and you're pink.
Well, I would just like to pile on and commend you for filling a need that, you know, government is designed to deliver a lot of services, but those services are pretty much cut and dried, you know. Like you said, they're medical services, they're fire services, they're law enforcement services, and they're delivered professionally, and yet, there are things out there that everyone knows need addressing, you know, where people are hurting, and which government is just not designed to provide. So, having members of the community, and particularly, members who are already devoting, you know, your careers and time away from family to helping people in your missions that you have, to be able to bring to bear that ability to relate to their circumstances, having seen, you know, it multiple times in lots of different situations, to be able to do that is really filling a need. And I'd sort of like to, if I could label you, I'd say you're like family first responders, you know.
Yeah.
So, Commissioner Vice Chairman Bowles has...
I want to thank you and the entire organization for what you're doing, and there's a lot of people in our community and other communities need help, and you provide that service, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Vice Chairman Bowles was good enough to bring to our attention your desire to be officially sanctioned in Iredell County, which I believe we will be happy to do, and we have a proclamation of support that he has provided, which I will then read, and then we'll have a motion to adopt that. This is a proclamation of support for Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills Chapter Incorporated, whereas, "The Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills Chapter Incorporated drives pink fire trucks, ambulances, police cars, and business-sponsored vehicles throughout our community and America, carrying forth the quote-unquote 'cares enough to wear pink' movement. This is not a single month of awareness, but a year-long movement among emergency services. Whereas, Pink Heels North Carolina Foothill Chapter, Inc. is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that raises awareness and funds for families and nonprofit entities that assist women and their families in time of need. Pink Heels brings a community together out of love, not on behalf of a cause, ribbon, or a large corporate charity. Pink Heels uses the color pink to represent women and their families, not a specific disease or illness. This is not about breast cancer, but all illnesses and needs within a community that can be cured or supported by keeping all money raised locally. Whereas, Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills Chapter, Inc. is a group of firefighters, police EMS, and other civil servants who proudly wear pink. Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills, Inc. is a 100% nonprofit and 100% volunteer, and no one from the organization is paid, nor are they compensated in any manner. Whereas, Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills, Inc. is wishing to bring love and support to all the citizens of Iredell County, beginning December 1st, 2017. This is to be done by assisting families battling all illnesses and diseases within the county. This will be done through home and work visits with the pink vehicles in conjunction with emergency services, personnel, and businesses in the jurisdiction. This will also be done by raising funds within the community to assist families with financial needs by direct payments being paid to illness-based bills. And whereas, beginning on this day, the county commissioners, with the support of the citizens of Iredell County, will support the nonprofit of Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills, Inc. and the governing body of Iredell County will support the efforts of North Carolina Foothills, Inc. in bringing awareness to the citizens in the Iredell County. Is there a motion to adopt this proclamation?
So move. Mr. Chairman?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, the motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, the Iredell County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the support of Pink North Carolina, Pink Heels North Carolina Foothills, Inc. throughout Iredell County, and encourage all Iredell County citizens to recognize the positive impact of this nonprofit organization and that it has on the quality of life of the citizens and the commonwealth of Iredell County. Adopted this, the 21st day of November, 2017. And at this time, I'd like to present this proclamation to you, and unlike Superman, I can't just tear off my clothes and find my suit underneath, but together with Sheriff Campbell, I think we'll be Tweedly and Tweedledum here, and so we'd like to present this to you.
Guys, could you humor me one more time? Can we all get out here and get our pictures taken?
Yes, if everybody can get out in front of the di, or if you'll come up behind, I think that's where it'd be easier way to do it.
Right, you stand right behind me. You going up there?
No, 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 no.
These ladies, come up right behind them.
Girls, y'all stand right here.
You got the T-shirt on, you got to be down front.
Come on in closer, ladies.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you for all your work.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Have a good Thanksgiving. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Okay, we will now move on to a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Elsa, and I believe that Sir Chris Younger or Russ Rogerson are going to be able to share information on that matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and County Commissioners. It's a privilege to be in front of you this evening. The Iredell County Economic Development Group is pleased to present to you tonight an expansion opportunity for Chaney Brothers, Inc. And since the company's only been in Statesville for a little over a year, let me tell you a little bit about them. Chaney Brothers, Inc. is a food service distributor based in Riviera Beach, Florida, with sales around $1.9 billion. They are a family-owned company founded in 1925, and Byron Russell was the chairman and CEO and a fourth-generation family member. They are a coast-to-coast distributor that operated primarily out of Florida until the purchase of Pate Dawson in 2016. With that purchase, they obtained operations in Statesville, Goldsboro, and Greensboro, North Carolina. The former Pate Dawson Statesville facility is located at 195 Business Park Drive in the Statesville Business Park off of Highway 70 East. The 98,000-square-foot building was utilized for one customer when operated by Pate Dawson, and its current size does not allow Chaney Brothers to operate in a full-service manner as their, their business model calls for. The company has been considering expanding this building or relocating to a larger facility in South Carolina or Georgia. Tonight, I'm pleased to present to you that Chaney Brothers, Inc. is proposing to invest some $20 to $24 million into the facility in Statesville by adding 160,000 square feet. That would require them to, to hire an additional 105 employees, paying at the county average wage over the next five years, period of time. The cost of due construction in today's market and the need to obtain additional land adjacent to the facility in order to expand places the Statesville facility in direct competition with the South Carolina and Georgia options. In order to incentivize the company to choose Statesville, we are recommending the following incentives. Chaney Brothers, Inc. incentives will be based on a threshold of $18 million and to add 160,000 square feet and to employ 105 new people. So, tonight, we're asking you to approve giving Chaney Brothers a five-year incentive, 80% grant back on the increased tax revenue generated by a proposed up to $24 million project. The value of this incentive is estimated to be no greater than $465,000 over the five-year incentive period. So, on behalf of Iredell County Economic Development Group, I want to thank you for your consideration in this manner, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Rogerson? Any comments?
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the hard work that you and Chris and your organization do, and the, we, the general public doesn't know the amount of things we have going on or you have going on until they're able to be disclosed, but I just want the public to know you guys are working extremely hard to grow Iredell County from each end, east, west, north, south, and so I want to thank you for that, for all the work you're putting in, and eventually, we'll be able to... we'll be able to celebrate with the public, hopefully.
Absolutely. Thank you. Well, I'd like to also say, you know, this is a project, I think, that's almost a year in the making, and it's required a considerable amount of engagement on behalf of our, by our economic development team, as well as City of Statesville and the county to craft a incentive package that could be competitive without a lot of assistance from state level because of our tier rating. And it's another example of the fundamentals that underlie any business decision being favorable in Iredell County, together with our emphasis on workforce development, that at the end of the day wins the day. But these type of incentives give us the extra edge to be able to push things across the finish line, particularly in a highly competitive environment, both in-state and out-of-state. And I think this is going to be a unique business addition to the county in terms of its transportation focus, as well as a rather unique demonstration kitchen and meeting facility that is incorporated into their building, that will also have some opportunities to work with our, you know, aspiring chefs at our Katz facility in Troutman. So a lot of good synergy here, a unique business to come to Iredell County with much greater than the normal average wage.
You know, when I was elected, I hadn't probably been sworn in more than a week or two that we did start this conversation with this company, and I said right off the get-go that this is the kind of company that I can see that works in Statesville. It's a distribution company, they run trucks, they distribute their own products, but it's fits for us. We have two interstates, and I think, I hope that they're going to be the model that we can point to for other people coming to do distribution here in Statesville in Iredell County. My grandfather always said, "Son, you just have to work with what the Lord gave you." Well, the Lord gave us two interstates, is the way I look at it, and we need to work with them, and I don't feel like we've used them like we should. That being said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve an economic incentive not to exceed the $465,000 over a five-year period for Chaney Brothers.
We need to have the public hearing.
Oh, is it public hearing? Okay, I'm sorry. Got ahead, I was so excited. I'm ready, I'm ready for them.
We'll put that in reserve. I'd like to open the public hearing at this time. I don't believe I have anyone, Ms. Gayther, that has signed up. I would inquire of anyone in the audience if anyone would like to be heard at this time. Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
All right, I'm back. And I'm still excited about this. So I want to make a motion to approve the economic incentive not to exceed, excuse me, $465,000 over a five-year period for Chaney Brothers Project Elsa, based on the company's investment of a minimum of $18 million, and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Rogerson.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay, our second public hearing of the evening will be teed up by Mr. Chris Younger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank this board and our chairman for allowing us to present before you this evening. Now, I thank Russ Rogerson for all that he's done to help make these deals come to fruition. Iredell County Economic Development is proud to announce Project Victory, which is MacMolten, their increased plans for expansion of their Statesville facility. They're a manufacturer and longtime corporate citizen of Iredell County. As they have, as they have further planned their expansion of their current facility by an additional 65,000 square feet, they have determined that the project could likely reach $6 million in investment. Previous total was $4,850,000. This project would expect to be completed by the end of 2019. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive, we are requesting the previously approved incentive package granted to Project Victory to be increased accordingly with the new investment increase. This would increase the tax grant back amount to approximately $23,280 per year for five years, totaling up to $116,400. On behalf of the Iredell County Economic Development, I want to thank you for your consideration of this matter, and will answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Younger. Any questions or comments?
You know, I always like to see people invest in Iredell County, and I always like to see people go, "I want to invest more in Iredell County," even after their first investment and their second investment. So this is a company that has been longstanding in the community, and it makes me feel good to see that Statesville and Iredell County is working for them, and so they're increasing their fold here in this county, and that's a good sign.
Thank you.
It's hard to recruit them, but it sure is good to keep them, too.
Just a comment about, you know, economic incentives. These are foregoing additional tax revenues. You know, as a county, we're not in the business of trying to attract folks to Iredell County just to tax them. Our primary focus is to get good wage, high-paying jobs from good employers for the people of this county. So foregoing some of those additional property tax revenues in the goal of getting these good-paying jobs, so people have disposable income, thereby increases sales taxes and also gives other businesses in Iredell County, in Statesville and Mooresville and Troutman and Harmony, the ability to have business models that are successful, because disposable income is the key to the whole other service side of our economic activity. So I will open the public hearing, and Ms. Gayther, any one sign up? No? Then I would inquire of anyone in the audience if you'd like to be heard on this matter. Seeing and hearing none, close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I was able to hold my tongue on this one just long enough to make a motion, but I would like to make a motion to approve an amendment to a prior economic development incentive granted in the amount up to $116,400 over a five-year period for the additional investment of $1.15 million, with a new total investment of $6 million in Iredell County, and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board, and the company owners and the employees at MacMolten want to thank you also.
And we thank them. Thank you, Mr. Younger.
Have a good holiday.
We can do this for new business, or you can do it now, or this is the call for that public hearing. Why don't we do a new business, or go and kill it when we're doing that?
Let's see here. There they go for this. Why don't we, why don't we do it right after the consent agenda? Okay. All right. Okay, we'll move on right now to the administrative matters that would be appropriate for the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, under the administrative matters from the pre-agenda, pre-agenda meeting at 5:00, we have Item 8.1, a request from the Health Department for permission to write off uncollected patient accounts in the amount of $23,415. Item 8.2, a request from Tax Administration for approval of the October refunds and releases. Item 3, a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on November 7th, 2017. And Item 8.5, a discussion of the I-77 Local Policy Advisory Group, and as a result of that discussion, Commissioner McNeely was to be appointed as the representative of Iredell County on this group, with Chairman Mallory as the backup. And this is a group that is being put together by the Secretary of Transportation to bring local comments and review of the Mercator Report and the I-77 project in general.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda? So moved. Motion has been made by Commissioner Howe. All in, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. If you would tee up the Personnel Policy carryover.
Yes, sir. Item 8.4 was a discussion of Section 5, or Article 5, Section 5 of the Personnel Ordinance. And this particular section deals with the accrual of vacation leave and sick leave. Currently, there is a limit of 240 hours of vacation leave, and any additional can be rolled into sick time, up to a cap of 80 hours. The proposal is to remove that cap of 80 hours and just let unlimited accruals over the amount of 240 hours to go into sick. This would not cost the county anything. This would go toward the employees' retirement from the local government system and would help us out at the end of the year when we have a lot of people that take extra time off, just so they do not lose it. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. Oh, and since this is an ordinance, what we would be asking is a call for, to call for a public hearing on December 5th.
Is there any further questions to be directed to Mr. Smith? Any comments? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Norman to adopt a public, to schedule a public hearing on the amendment of the Personnel Policy Ordinance concerning accrual of vacations. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We have one announcement of a vacancy on a board or commission. In this case, it's a late-breaking announcement that was not scheduled. This board appoints a representative on the Statesville Regional Airport Board to represent the county, and our primary representative for the last two years has been former Commissioner and former Chairman Steve Johnson. Upon Steve Johnson's recent election to the Statesville City Council, he is now wearing a different hat, and it would be appropriate for us to appoint a replacement. Commissioner Gene Howe has been the alternate to Mr. Johnson for the last close to two years, and so effective upon Mr. Johnson's swearing-in as a city councilman, then his position as far as a representative from this board would then become vacant, need to be replaced, and I believe that there is, be a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to move forward with the appointment of Mr. Howe and an alternate to replace Commissioner Howe, as he's going to be the primary.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to suspend the rules, to move forward with the appointment of Gene Howe as the primary appointee to the Airport Commission, and James Mallory as his backup.
Okay. Motion, any further discussion on the suspension of the rules? Okay, all in favor of suspending the rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And the second part of the motion is to appoint Commissioner Howe as the primary representative and myself as the alternate, effective upon the date of Commissioner, former Commissioner Johnson's swearing-in as a city councilman. All in, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Appointments to boards and commissions, there are none, no new appointments to announce this evening, and no vacancies being announced today, but we would like to reiterate that at our last meeting, we announced a number of different boards with vacancies that are open to be filled, that we are going to fill or vote on at our next meeting. Want to encourage folks to take a look at our website, to become acquainted with those opportunities to serve, and we need a broad cross-section of citizens, business owners, folks that have experience in these particular fields, or if they just have a passion for whatever the subject matter they deal with, we really encourage you to get an application in, and those applications are available on our website. And these are critical functions that in order for us to have appropriate oversight and bring accountability to many of these different areas, we need citizen involvement. So just encourage everyone to please open, take some time to check out the website, and if you're not adept on the internet, then pick up the phone and please call our county clerk, county manager, either of our deputies, and they will acquaint you with what's available. Unfinished business, we had a off-site meeting for a fall retreat this last Friday, past Friday, which was an open meeting, and at that time, an issue that had been brought to our attention through a number of different citizens contacting different commissioners about concerns at our high schools and the termination of gate guard contracts that had been there for a number of years, and their concerns were communicated, and we had asked at our last meeting, two weeks ago, for the Education Task Force comprised of Commissioner Norman and Commissioner Howe to take the lead on investigating that issue as it relates to safety and security of our schools, and as a result, they had meetings, and I'd like to just turn it over to them to share the process and the information that they developed, and then share the proposed way ahead.
What we did for the public concern is our task forces meet regularly with members of both school systems' task forces, along with community members and staff from the county. The school system, you know, unfortunately, was, had to make some tough decisions after funding shortfalls from various sources after the summer, and they make internal choices as to cuts and priorities that they make. But this board, after the gate guards were cut, and we all received community feedback from a lot of community members and concerned citizens and parents to please consider bridging that gap temporarily, at least from December, I think, until June of next year. The gate guards are intended to be a first line of defense for people entering the campuses. Through our task forces, we're going to be tasked monthly, starting next month or January, to come up with and look at our security at all of our high schools, and figure out with the sheriff and the school system, and ways to figure out funding streams, for permanent funding streams, ways to make our campuses a hard target. I can't tell you everything that the sheriff's doing and the staff is doing, staff members of the school system are working on, because we don't want to advise potential criminals of things that we do actively have going on, but we will have more activities going on, patrols, due diligence matters, and such as that going on. But I wanted to say, you know, for concerned citizens, this board and previous boards have always, and I know in the past at least 10 years, I'll say, the funding for the schools has increased yearly and annually. This board does a great job in prioritizing education and investing in education, which in turn benefits the taxpayers of Iredell County through economic investment. in turn benefits the taxpayers of Iredell County through economic investment. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Norman and anybody else, but I just wanted to reiterate the appreciation from the superintendents and the school boards and community members that have gotten back to Commissioner Norman and I on behalf of those people, they appreciate us stepping up, being proactive to try to watch out for staff and the children to pick up the gap in this situation.
First, I want to thank the parents for bringing this to our attention and also apologize to them for all the stress that some of the high school parents went through. And I want to make a motion based on this board's discussion on last Thursday, last Friday, that we appropriate ninety-one thousand dollars from contingency to pay for security guards or gate guards from December twenty-eight, twenty-seventeen to June twenty-eighteen and then we will address the other delay time.
A motion by Commissioner Norman, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say, unfortunately, I feel like we're kind of rewarding bad behavior. I think this was not well thought out when it was, when the gate guards or we'll call them security guards were not renewed, but whether we like what happened or not, I feel like in my heart, and I'm sure the rest of us, too, if there's anything we can do to protect our young people, our children of the community, I think we're going to do it. And like I said, I'm not, not real happy with the circumstances, but I can't look a mother or grandmother or any parent in the eye if something would happen to their child at the school where I or us could have took some part in stopping it. And so with that said, I am going to be in favor of this motion.
Any further discussions? Motion is on the floor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. And I want to thank all the members of the board for fielding various citizens' queries about this and then being able to react pretty quickly in terms of being able to craft a temporary solution pending full review of the, the full suite of options that we have relative to providing a safe and secure environment, not only in our schools, but in our workplace. This is a public comment period as we normally have on the second meeting of every month. Ms. Gaither, has anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Brad must have scared everyone off. I don't know if you want to. Okay, I'll have to inquire as to anyone remaining if you'd like to take advantage of this public comment period. Well, seeing and hearing none, I'll open the public comment period and I'll close the public comment period. Thank you. New business, we were apprised in a closed session for economic development purposes by Mr. Rogerson and Mr. Younger of a, of a new opportunity for Iredell County. It's very exciting and so I'd like to ask Commissioner McNeely if he would share a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you know, is, we kind of, people think we're, not a whole lot's going on in the county. Maybe they haven't heard a lot of news, but it looks like we're going to close in a fury here this year, so things are looking up. I told some of the other commissioners to cancel the, the coal that we had for our economic development team's sock and they, they're going to get candy and nuts and everything else, too, it looks like. So with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on December the fifth, two thousand seventeen at seven P.M. regarding an economic development incentive not to exceed five hundred and three thousand dollars over a six-year period for Project Eager based on a twenty-three point six million dollar investment in Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you to our economic development team and I, I know that you see Mr. Rogerson and Mr. Younger representing them, but they have a great staff that works in concert with them daily, responding to requests for information and being able to craft, you know, innovative approaches to be able to be competitive in a very competitive environment. So please convey our appreciation for this new joint Iredell County effort. At this time, Mr. Smith, if you will render the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got two things to go through tonight. The first is, is basically a synopsis of, of our retreat on Friday. We actually, and I won't go through all of these, but we have about twenty-five takeaways that, that we're working on now. And so in, over the course of the next few months, expect to hear back from us on a number of things. But in general, you know, although our retreats are public meetings, they're not generally well-attended. So just wanted to give an idea of what we discussed. First thing is our planning department went through a residential development report. As it, as you would expect, it's showing that the county's growing, but the one, one of the good things about this report that I find is that it's all tied geographically, the growth is tied geographically to where it is in the county and we can track that through, actively through building permits. That's important for us for future planning purposes and important to the schools as well and it's something that we do share with them. This is something that we're going to get on our website. We'll have it on the planning website, so hopefully others can, can benefit from it. Had a long discussion about the county's strategic plan and task force initiatives. Ben Seiklether went through a presentation that he had worked on with the chairman. Very good presentation that shows a number of achievements and accomplishments made by this board over the last few years. That's another thing that we want to build into the strategic planning section of our website, just so people, we try and get that information out, but if it's readily available, then, then folks can look at it and pick it up. We received a report or a presentation from First Try and Advisors, who we deal with quite extensively when issuing debt and dealing with capital projects, and they presented a capital planning model overview. That was, to me, it was the first time I really saw it other than a draft and I was astounded at the, the breadth and the depth that this is going to provide us in our financial analysis on a long-term basis. As you all know, there's a facility, School Facilities Task Force coming, going on now that'll come to you eventually, love to use it for that. We'll also use it for all of our capital projects that we bring to you and which we did bring to you on Friday. So I know we didn't have numbers associated with those, but as you would expect, the county growing the way it is, we're feeling it in facilities and that was another one of our main topics of discussion. So those were some of the big things. I won't get granular, but again, you know, we've got the twenty-five action items that we will be working on if one of them was addressed tonight and that was the two hundred and forty-hour limit or two hundred and forty, eighty-hour limit on the sick time and vacation accruals. So we'll work through those and hopefully we'll get those done fairly quickly. So the second thing I wanted to share tonight and definitely don't do this type of thing very often, but felt like it was something that needed to be brought out, it has been in the paper. A member of the Iredell County Government family, Barry Whitesides, was in a pretty horrific bicycle accident about eight weeks ago. Barry is in the planning department, he's been in other departments over the last twenty-seven years. So Barry suffered pretty significant, very significant injuries and just wanted to say that his department is sponsoring a barbecue for him. It's just a fundraiser to help with their medical bills, which are going to be substantial. And that's going to be on Wednesday, December sixth, from eleven to two o'clock. Not really trying to solicit anything other than just to get it out there and Barry's very well-known in Statesville and in Iredell County and just wanted to make that, use the bully pulpit once for him.
My thoughts and prayers are certainly with Barry and his family during this very difficult time and, and, and long road to recovery. Is there anything further for the good of the order? Go ahead.
I just wanted to say on behalf of myself and this board, the county manager and all of our staff, we want to wish one another and all of our citizens a safe and happy Thanksgiving and ask that the good Lord continue to bless this county, state and our country. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you. I think we can all agree on that without a formal motion.
Just, just want to let you know beforehand and we'll give you more information when I get back, but I'm on the Agricultural Steering Committee for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners and we are meeting next Thursday to try to go ahead and set some legislative agenda for our upcoming legislative conference we have in February. So I'll be going to Raleigh to talk to them, so if there's anybody else, I'm going to see if I can look up my old buddy, Harry Brown, while I'm down there. I always try to do that one in town.
Well, be sure and invite Harry to Iredell County again.
I've been trying to drag and get him up here. I'll see what I can do, but anyway, got that coming up, so I'll let you know what we get worked out on the agricultural side for our legislative goals, anyway.
Well, hearing no additional items, I'll ask if there is a motion to adjourn. Motion by Commissioner, Commissioner Norman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Happy Thanksgiving.